Good evening. Will members and our guests please take their seats? This meeting will now come to order. As all members have received a copy of the call for tonight’s meeting, the reading of the call will be omitted. Will everyone please rise and join me in saying pledge allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good evening. My name is Tom Byrne, RTM moderator. All right, I am told that this hat was left at our last meeting.[74.59][74.59](Laughter) If anyone recognizes it, it will be up front. All right, a representative of the Police Department would like to make an announcement.
How you doing, everyone? My name is Officer Grabowski, City of Stanford Police Department. Right now, we’re looking for a 72-year-old male. He’s 5’2” about 140 pounds. He’s senile and he’s mute. He has white hair. He was last seen wearing a black shirt, black pants, and black shoes, wandering from the Guinea Road area down Stanwich. If anybody saw him throughout town, this was earlier this afternoon, around like 3:00, he went missing. He wandered out of his house. Right now, we’re tracking him down Stanwich Road. If anybody, I don’t know, I figured I’d step out because I saw all the cars, maybe somebody saw him on their way in or throughout town. Anybody? No? Okay. Well, if you happen to see him after you leave here, please call the police, either Greenwich or Stanford or State, whatever. We’re looking for him, okay? Thank you very much.
Thank you. As all members have received a copy of the proposed minutes of our May budget meeting, the reading of those minutes will be omitted. Are there any suggested changes to those minutes? Hearing none and absent objection, the minutes as submitted stand adopted upon unanimous consent. Yara Burnett of the Greenwich League of Women Voters would like to address us tonight.
Thank you very much, Tom and Alexis, for giving me this opportunity to address the members. The League will once again be doing, before the election, an enhanced electronic voter’s guide for the RTM solely. As two years ago, it will be in addition to the regular RTM listing of candidates that will appear in the Greenwich time just the weekend before the election. I came here to give you a little bit of a heads-up how it’s going to do, and we hope to have even a better response than last year. Proceeding the deadline for the declaration of all the candidates somewhere around the 16th of September, as soon as the slate is certified, we will send an invitation to all the people that are on the Town Clerk’s list of candidates to submit several things electronically for the voter’s guide. What we will be asking is for your name, address, photograph, and a response to two or three questions. We expect this will happen probably the week of September 16th, as quickly as possible. These responses will go directly into a drop box from which they will be acknowledged automatically by the Woo-Fu system. In other words, whatever you submit will be kicked back to you so that you can check out what you have submitted. No human hand will touch it at that point. Eventually, we may have to send a few reminders because the deadline is going to be fairly stringent. There is quite a bit of layout to do in order for us to publish this guide as early as possible to benefit the absentee voters. There is one thing that is absolutely critical. This is an electronic guide. We need your emails. The Town Clerk has already added a column to the form where you will be submitting your candidacy, and please do not forget to put in your email. Thank you very much.
So what did you say the deadline is expected to be?
The deadline, the first deadline is going to be around the 16th of September. We will be depending on the Town Clerk in order to make sure that she has the slate in full. We will definitely finalize the deadlines and all of that. All of the deadlines for responses and everything will be clearly stated in the invitation to submit.
All right, because I think that’s about the time, that is the deadline for people to file, so you’re going to probably have to move that.
Yes, what we will do is as soon as the slate is ready, we will start working on it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
The Special Committee on RTM Governance is in the process of wrapping up their wonderful work over this past year and a half, and so they are meeting, is it this week or next week? This week, Wednesday, is expected to be their final meeting where they put the final, the finishing touches on what they are working on. And we won’t know until that meeting, but they are planning to have an informational session, several, but the first would be later this month. So I wanted to alert everyone to be on the lookout for that. We will send out notice, but they are hoping to have the first session this month, and they hope to put their recommendations on the September call. So they will have additional informational sessions in September, but that’ll be a compressed calendar with the end of summer. So just be on the lookout for that. And I thank them, and certainly as we go forward, I owe them a very deep debt of thanks, and I intend to recognize their efforts, but we will await the conclusion of their effort. All right. Were there any other administrative matters? That brings us to the call for tonight’s meeting. There will be some changes. I did send out a notice of my intention on organizing our agenda items tonight. And the one change, I had included something that was to be postponed as a combined calendar So I will make that change. And then there’s another issue Mr. Eddy will bring up later, and we may have to postpone yet another, but I’m going to await. Mr. Eddy, what item is that?
It’s on 19th, I believe, right now.
All right, so I’ll take that off the consent calendar, and we’ll put that on separate. All right. So my recommendation will be to put on our consent calendar items 2, 7, 8, 9, 10, 13, 14, 15, and 16. I will recommend that we combine items 4, 6, and 20 for voting purposes, and that would leave items 1, 3, 5, 11, 12, 17, 18, and 19 to be considered separately. So at this point, pursuant to our rules, I will designate the following items for our consent calendar. First is item 2, that is the appointment of Anna Maria McGinnis to be an alternate member of the Historic District Commission for a term beginning upon appointment tonight and expiring October 31, 2023. Item 7 is the appointment of Nancy Chapin to be a member of the Board of Parks and Recreation for a term beginning July 1, 2019, and expiring June 30, 2022. Item 8 is the appointment of Pastor Carol Bloom to be a member of the Board of Ethics for a term beginning July 1, 2019, and expiring June 30, 2022. Item 9 is the appointment of Thomas Patron to be a member of the Board of Human Services for a term beginning July 1, 2019, and expiring June 30, 2022. Item 10 is the appointment of Stephen Katz to be a member of the Commission on Aging for a term beginning July 1, 2019, and expiring June 30, 2022. Item 13 is the appointment of Robert Greeley to be a member of the Board of Ethics for a term beginning July 1, 2019, and expiring June 30, 2022. Item 14 is the appointment of Carol Burns to be a member of the Commission on Aging for a term beginning July 1, 2019, and expiring June 30, 2022. Item 15 is the appointment of Peter Lowe to be an alternate member of the Planning and Zoning Commission for a term beginning upon appointment tonight and expiring October 31, 2020. And item 16 is the appointment of Frank DiVincenzo to be a member of the Board of Parks and Recreation for a term beginning July 1, 2019, and expiring June 30, 2022. All right, pursuant to our rules, all of those items have now been designated on our consent calendar, and on those items, we do not hear committee reports or have discussion. Is there any objection to the designation of those items to our consent calendar? Hearing none, will the district chairs please mark your voting cards? Consent calendar items 2, 7, 8, 9, 10, 13, 14, 15, and 16, and please proceed to poll your delegation. All right. I will recommend that we combine items 4, 6, and 20 for voting purposes. That requires a motion to suspend the rules. Is there such a motion? It has been moved and seconded to suspend the rules to combine items 4, 6, and 20 for voting purposes. That motion is not debatable, and it requires a 2/3 majority to pass. All those in favor of suspending the rules to combine items 4, 6, and 20 for voting purposes, please signify by saying aye. Opposed? That motion has carried. All right, we will now take up the combined items. Item 4 now comes before us. Do we have, is Tyler, is this a Tyler Fairburn? Who’s presenting? Tyler Fairburn, who’s our community developer, Director of Community Development.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Moderator, members of the RTM. For item number 4, this is consideration for the approval, rather, for the seven applications we received for the Neighborhood Assistance Act program.
All right, thank you. Will a member, and it’s the same as it appears on the call, will a member please move the adoption of the resolution? Resolution on item 4 has been moved and seconded. May we have the reports of the committees that considered this, beginning with Alexis Vulgaris, Chair of our Health and Human Services Committee?
Good evening. Tyler Fairburn, Director of Community Development, joined us last week to discuss this item. The Connecticut Neighborhood Assistance Act is an item that comes before the RTM each year. It’s a program that provides tax credits for businesses that contribute to community programs that have received both municipal and state approval. After the tax-exempt organization receives both municipal and state approval for its proposed programs, it is then up to that organization to secure funding from businesses, which will receive a tax credit from the state. July 1st is the deadline for the town to submit all applications completed by the nonprofit agencies to the State Department of Revenue, which is why the RTM takes this item up each June. This year, seven local nonprofit organizations applied for tax credit consideration. You can find those details on page 5 in your Explanos, for a total of $625,000. It should be noted that for programs such as the YMCA, which is applying for a contribution towards energy-efficient windows, companies contributing to an energy-efficient initiative are eligible for 100% tax credit rate, while those that contribute to a non-energy-efficient initiative are eligible for a 60% rate, tax credit rate. The state does have a monetary cap on neighborhood assistance of $5 million, and the maximum that any organization may be awarded is $150,000. Again, it’s up to the organization requesting the funding for the approved programs to solicit and secure these donations directly from businesses. This program does not cost the town of Greenwich anything. Our vote was 11-0-0 with District 10 absent. Thank you.
Thank you. With the Finance Committee report?
Nothing more to elaborate. Alexis did a great job. The Finance Committee took this up and voted 11-0-0 with District 4 absent in favor.
Thank you. Doug Wells, is Doug here? Legislative and, I’m sorry, I was looking at 6. So were there any other committee reports on this? All right, discussion on item 4. Item 6 now comes before us. Tyler Fairburn with that resolution.
Thank you again. Item number 6 is the approval and adoption of the town’s CDBG Program Year 2019 Annual Action Plan that allows us to accept HUD funding for the upcoming program year.
Thank you. Will a member please move the adoption of the resolution?
As it appears in the call.
The resolution on item 6 has been moved and seconded. I might just say for some who recall in past years, we have held public hearings when considering the Community Development Block Grant Resolution. There are two public hearings required by federal regulations, but they’ve already been conducted, so we do not need to conduct a public hearing tonight. Alexis Vulgaris with the Health and Human Services Committee report.
Good evening. Health and Human Services met last Tuesday with Tyler, the Community Development Administrator, to review the proposed amendment or to review Block Grant Action Plan. And in the interest of full disclosure, I’m the Chair of the Block Grant Advisory Committee, and so Tyler and I actually presented this item together to my committee. So it’s the most schizophrenic report I deliver because I am simultaneously delivering two reports at once. So the CDBG program is a federally funded program through HUD. This is an item that also comes before the BET and the RTM each year, and it needs to be approved and reviewed by both parties before the final application can be submitted and acted upon by the First Selectman on behalf of the Town of Greenwich to HUD. You should have all received a draft copy of the Block Grant Plan in May via email. The Community Development Block Grant Advisory Committee meets for about six months out of the year. It’s the group responsible for reviewing the funding applications and making suggestions regarding the allocation of funds. The Advisory Committee is comprised of roughly 28 representatives from the RTM, BET, the Department of Social Services, citizens at large, lots of different stakeholders. It’s anticipated that the town will receive approximately $818,000 in fiscal year 2019 from HUD, plus $420,000 in reprogram funds, for a total of $1.238,000. Per HUD guidelines and regulations, 20% of the total budgeted amount, or about $160,000, is dedicated to administrative expenses. 15% can be allocated to public service programs, that’s about $102,000, while the remaining 65% is dedicated to capital improvements, such as property rehabilitations, acquisitions, things like that. That’s about $942,000. When considering how much to allocate to each program, the Advisory Committee took into consideration multiple factors, such as programs’ impact within the community, number of individuals served, fundraising capacity of the organization, past block grant support, and did the organization receive any additional grants from either the town or Town of Greenwich or another source. This year, 20 programs applied for public service funding, and the Advisory Committee recommended funding for 18 applicants. Every organization that applied received a minimum of $5,000. In some cases, if an agency applied for two grants, the Advisory Committee asked the organization to rank which grant application was more important to them. We don’t have enough money to give one organization multiple grants, so every organization received some. The two that didn’t were just sort of repeat applicants. Again, all of that information is contained in the copy that you received, but some of the initiatives that we supported were Head Start programs, mental health, support for domestic violence programs, food pantry, super marketing for seniors, senior dental care, a wide variety of services to help some of our most needy residents. In addition to public service funding requests, a total of 17 grants were submitted for public facility activities, so it’s your capital improvements. The committee elected to fund 16 grants, and this is where it starts to get quite complicated. The Greenwich Housing Authority, which is a private organization and not a department of the Town of Greenwich, submitted a very large request of $450,000 to renovate 110 kitchens at Wilbur Peck. The Advisory Committee did not recommend funding for this application due to the very serious and significant problems by the housing authority to spend down funds from previous years in a timely way. HUD imposes timeliness standards. Failure to spend down grants in a timely way can result in the loss of block grant money. The housing authority had approximately $765,000 in unspent money dating back to 2015, and they needed to draw down at least $500,000 of that by May 2, 2019, or the town would have essentially been penalized at least $500,000 in future block grant funding, which would have caused the program to effectively collapse. As Chair of the Advisory Committee, I appointed a small working group comprised of Tyler Fairburn, Sam Tellerico of District 12, Rick Wellington of District 11, Vic Sandu from the Board of Health, and then three members of the Board of Estimant Taxation, David Weissbrot, Bill Drake, and Beth Crummick, who wasn’t even on our committee but graciously joined it for this, to intervene. And I’m happy to report that the housing authority was able to draw down $515,000, allowing us to avert getting penalized by HUD. However, they still have approximately $248,000 outstanding. The total cost of the Wilbur Peck project is approximately $1.6 million, and the Advisory Committee was told that the housing authority had about $1.2 million cash on hand for the project. The committee recommended that the housing authority begin the renovation project with 75% of the funding they have on hand, and then next year, program year 2020, come back to block grant for partial funding of the project. An action plan that encourages phasing of the kitchen projects allows for better project oversight and execution. The Advisory Committee did recommend funding for a playground renovation project at Adams Garden that we felt could get completed on time for about $61,000. As stewards of the block grant, the Advisory Committee has a fiduciary responsibility to ensure that our decisions are responsible and reflect an ongoing commitment to the longevity of the program. This is not about the housing authority or the residents of Wilbur Peck. The housing authority has traditionally been the largest beneficiary of block grant money, over $3 million in 10 years, but we really had to look at what was right for the program. It was very complicated, and I’m happy to say that it was resolved. However, on behalf of the Advisory Committee, I would like to extend our sincere appreciation and gratitude to First Selectman Peter Tessie for endorsing the recommendations of the committee despite heavy pressure from the housing authority to amend those recommendations. We thank you for your support. We understand it was a difficult decision, and we’re very grateful and appreciative of all the work you did. Thank you very much. And our vote was 11-0-0 with District 10 absent. Thank you.
Doug Wells, Chair of our Legislative and Rules Committee.
Mr. Moderator, ladies and gentlemen, we took up this item last Monday evening. We heard much of what Alexis just said about the HUD money essentially being taken and going to be given back at a later time to finish the project that needs to be done at Wilbur Peck. Our committee focused on the language of the resolution. We were assured by Mr. Fairburn that with the exception of the dates and the amount, the resolution is as it has always appeared, and our vote as to legal order was 9-0-0 with Districts 3, 5, and 10 absent.
Thank you. Mike Basham, Vice Chair of our Finance Committee.
Tyler presented to the Finance Committee. We had a very brief discussion, and then we voted 11-0-0 with District 4 absent to approve.
Thank you. Discussion on item 6. Item 20 now comes before us. Assistant Fire Chief Robert Kik.
Good evening, Mr. Moderator, members of the town meeting. This request is for an additional appropriation in the amount of $136,000 to cover the annual fees from Aquarian, which are non-negotiable. When we developed our 1819 budget, we didn’t have an accurate estimate of the annual costs due to a 5% rate reduction that was expiring. The rate reduction has expired, and now we know our shortage. Thank you.
Thank you. Will a member please move the adoption of the resolution? Resolution on item 20 has been moved and seconded. Michael Basham with the report of our Finance Committee.
Yes, we took this up very quickly and voted 11-0-0 with District 4 absent to approve.
Thank you. Richard Newman, Chair of our Town Services Committee.
Town Services took this up during our budget meeting this year. We were expecting this. We voted 8-0-0. Thank you.
Thank you. Discussion on item 20. Will the district chairs please mark your voting cards? Combined items 4, 6, and 20, and proceed to poll your delegation. We do have the result of the vote on the consent calendar items. Those in favor, 167; opposed, 0; abstaining, 1. The consent calendar items have carried. That now brings us to the first of the separate items, and we will go in numerical order. Number 1 was postponed from our March meeting. That is now before us. That is a resolution to make a name change to a road in Old Greenwich. May we have the committee reports on that item? Peter Berg with the report of our Land Use Committee.
Good evening, Mr. Moderator, fellow members. The Land Use Committee met last Monday evening. All of the districts were represented. Item 1 is the renaming of Hendry Drive Extension to Monte Point. Mr. Rob Leah, an attorney representing the owners of 23 and 24 Hendry Drive Extension, was there to explain this item. So there are three, there are only three properties on Hendry Drive Extension. The same person owns two of them, number 23 and number 24, and he explained that those, that owner petitioned the town to rename Hendry Drive Extension to Monte Point, and he, in doing so, they followed the town’s procedure for road renaming. That request was approved administratively by the Planning and Zoning staff because it conforms to town requirements. It was approved by the Board of Selectmen. So as I said, there were, there are only three properties on Hendry, on Hendry Drive Extension. Mr. Leah provided a letter from the owners of the third property, number 1 Hendry Drive Extension, Christina and Paul Tolan stating they have no objection to the renaming. Mr. Leah explained the rationale for the name change has to do with safety and navigational issues. There are multiple Hendrys in town. There are two Hendry Drives, 24 Hendry Drive and 24 Hendry Drive Extension, which confuses visitors, first responders, Uber drivers, UPS deliveries, food deliveries, and so forth. Mr. Leah provided a letter from Danielle Ojje, O-J-J-E-H, of 24 Hendry Drive, describing the confusion, the confusion and inconvenience and frustration, and she supports the renaming. One member, by the way, Mr. Leah also had a copy of the one-page instructions that Planning and Zoning issues for renaming of streets in town. I can review that with anybody who wants to see it. It does appear that they, that they did follow the procedure. It says that the, upon approval by the RTM, the Selectmen’s Office verifies abutting ownership and then notifies 12 agencies from the Police Department, Fire Department, Tax Assessor, all the way through to the zoning enforcement officer. And then it says when a street name is changed, it is the individual property owner’s responsibility to notify any other interested party, such as associations, banks, mortgagers, insurance companies. So one member of the Land Use Committee questioned whether there was a cost to the town. Mr. Leah said he wasn’t aware of any. Another member asked why there was nobody from Department of Public Works present to answer questions. As the Chairman of the Committee, I did not think to invite As the chairman of the committee, I did not think to invite somebody from Public Works. A motion to postpone this matter to the September meeting was defeated. So, we voted on the item, as it appears on the call. The vote on Item 1 was 6 in favor, 4 opposed. District 10 was absent at that point of the meeting. Districts 1, 2, 4, and 5 voted no because they wanted further information from DPW, including possible cost to the town. District 7 abstained. So, once again, our vote was 6 in favor, 4 opposed, 1 abstention.
Thank you. Arlene Lamazo, Chairman of our Public Works Committee.
Mr. Moderator, sorry. Mr. Moderator and members, Public Works, I'm not offering a report from Public Works because we intend to make a motion, and I'd like to do that at the appropriate time.
All right. Why don't you explain what it... Do you have any further report before I call on you for that motion?
No.
All right. This a motion to postpone indefinitely?
Yes. This is a motion to postpone indefinitely. The previous submissions in 2018 and 2019 were postponed because we expected to have much more information, which was not included in this particular submission. We raise the same questions as Peter just explained, but we also had a concern as to whether this sets a precedent where an owner would like to rename the road in front of him and name it for himself, and then add a very enhanced word, "point." That's "Monty Point." We had a question as to whether that was meant to be an enhanced version of the address. We did not have access to any of the information Peter had, so we voted 10 in favor to postpone and 1 against, and that's to postpone it indefinitely. Districts 9 and 11 were absent. Thank you.
All right. So, Public Works has moved to postpone Item 1 indefinitely. That motion does not require a second coming from one of our committees. It is now before us. Discussion on the motion to postpone indefinitely. No? All right. Now, the... I'm sorry? Lucy Krasner, District 5. We have a speaker coming up.
I would urge everybody not to postpone this indefinitely, which really means the item is put aside forever. It does seem to me as if we do have a lot of Hendry Drive this and that's, and if the people who are on this road are in favor of it, and they do talk about difficulty with deliveries, I think we should honor their wishes and proceed to allow this to go through and not vote to postpone it indefinitely.
Further discussion on the motion to postpone indefinitely. David Rudolph, District 6.
Mr. Moderator, members of the RTM, the reason why this motion was made was because multiple attempts have been made by the committee to get more information on this matter, and we've been ignored or rebuffed, and this is the third time around. And if the proponents of this matter are really interested in getting this done, they would have had the... taken the time and effort to supply the information that we politely requested in writing. So, until that time, I think that behooves the proponents to start over again from the very beginning. Thank you.
Further discussion on this pending motion. Yes, sir. Please identify yourself.
Robert Leah. Mr. Berg announced me a little bit. Thank you for the time. I wasn't sure if I was able to address you, so I assume it's okay. Apologies for not responding to that request. We really didn't know much more about the process than was online, and at no point would have been told certain of the meetings that had happened. So, I apologize that we weren't able to provide that information, and I certainly would like you to consider this, not for lack of information. So, Mr. Berg was kind enough to have me last week. We talked about this. This really does come down to a safety issue. We filed this petition in December of 2017, and we've been working very hard from that point of time to today. So, this has been a year and a half of trying to get this through, and the mistakes that we've made, I certainly apologize. But we would like it to be considered as soon as possible because it has been a long process. We do have three residents that this affects. The two residents that made the petition and the third who support it seem to me that they are trying to change something that has been a hardship on the neighborhood. There are multiple Hendry Drives in Greenwich, but Hendry Drive Extension sits at the end of Hendry Drive, and so it adds the confusion of once you're on Hendry Drive, it's not lane or avenue, it's drive and drive extension. It's caused a lot of problems. The letter I received from 24 Hendry Drive, obviously this won't affect their address, but they've gotten to a situation where they don't answer the door. It's sometimes due to strangers and deliveries and things coming to them. There's concern when she leaves her children home, and so she is a big proponent of this, as are the people that are trying to do it. As for the naming convention we used, Mr. Mazzio brought up, we didn't mean any disrespect by that either. It is physically a point, and "Monty" is a derivation of a nickname, and so a common naming convention in streets in town are names and physical features. It's just following that. So, I apologize if that caused any confusion either. Our biggest concern here is that we do believe there is a safety issue, and I don't think any of us would want a situation where we weren't able to partake in a procedure that was put online by the town that apparently is a procedure you can follow simply because we didn't provide enough information. So, I apologize about that. Hendry Drive, 24 Hendry Drive and 24 Hendry Drive Extension have addressed confusion, and it is a concern of ours from a safety point of view. We spoke to the fire marshal in town. They were supportive of the change, and so we felt that was supportive, and I'm happy to answer any questions that weren't provided prior to this time. If there are any, I'd love to address them.
Thank you. Further discussion on Item 1? Yes, sir.
Good evening. Aaron Leonard, District 12. The reason, the primary reason stated is safety. Well, we are in luck. We have members of the first responders, Greenwich first responders, present, so they can clarify if they are confused by the difference between Hendry and Hendry Extension. Secondly, this is town property. It is a town resource. I'm sure Monty is or was a great individual, but I've yet to hear anything about his significance to the globe, or the country, or the state, or the town. It is as a resource. If the town wishes to sell that piece of property and turn it into a private road, I don't... with more information, I don't see at this moment an objection to that, at which point they can call it whatever they'd like. As long as it remains town property and a town road, I need more to back this, and therefore I would support a motion to postpone indefinitely. Thank you.
Further discussion on Item 1? Yes.
I'm Nancy Gray from District 10, and the only observation I want to make is that we have recently experienced a lot of back and forth about pretty small dollar items in the RTM over important innovations, at least in northwest, and it seems to me that this isn't the kind of opportunity that the town could take to actually raise some money. When there's a naming possibility, either for a public road, a renaming possibility, a public road or a building, why don't we do what New York City does and let somebody make a major donation and let that influence what the name of the road's going to be for the life of that person's donation? Only reason I'm saying this is that it does have some financial value. To rename a public road is a little bit of a vanity project, and there's nothing wrong with that, but like the prior speaker, I agree that if we're going to name it for a person, it should be someone extremely distinguished who has given an amazing amount to the town, someone like Joan Caldwell, for example. It's just a thought. Thank you.
That's a great idea. Further discussion on Item 1? Will the district chairs please... Oh, I'm sorry. So, let me explain what we are voting on. We are voting on the Public Works Committee motion to postpone Item 1 indefinitely. Motion to postpone indefinitely is a motion to kill the item. If this motion receives a majority vote, we will have disposed of this. It could only come back as if from the beginning. It is not putting it off to a later date. It would be killing it. So, if you are in favor of killing this item tonight, you should vote yes on the motion to postpone indefinitely. If you want to vote on the merits, you should vote tonight. You should vote no on the motion postponed. If the motion postponed indefinitely does not receive a majority, we will then vote on the merits on Item Number 1. Everybody clear? If you want to kill it, vote yes. I'm going to call for a record vote. Will the district chairs please mark your voting cards? Public Works Committee motion to postpone Item 1 indefinitely and proceed to poll your delegation. We'll need to await the result of that vote. If you could please expedite it. I guess we could continue with the business of the... No. Well, let's find out. All right. I do have the result of the vote on the combined items. Those were Items 4, 6, and 20. Those in favor, 169; opposed, 0; abstaining, 0. The combined items have carried. We have the result of the vote on the motion to postpone Item 1 indefinitely. Those in favor, 107; opposed, 65; abstaining, 1. That motion has carried. Now, I was just informed that there has been a petition filed that will be coming on our September call to rename the same road Covridge Lane, so we'll get to see that again in September. All right. Continuing with the business of the meeting. Item Number 3 now comes before us. Caroline Basely, Director of Health.
Mr. Moderator, members of the RTM, resolve that the amended and reinstated governing agreement for providing advanced life support emergency medical services by and in between the town of Greenwich, referred as the town, and the Greenwich Emergency Medical Services, referred as the provider, dated July 1, 2019, herein after, referred to as the contract, be approved and the Chairman of the Board of Health be empowered to execute the contract on behalf of the town of Greenwich. Other information contained in the comments and attachments is included as it appears on the call.
Thank you. Will a member please move the adoption of the resolution? Resolution on Item 3 has been moved and seconded. May we have the reports of the committees that considered this item? Alexis Vulgaris with the Health and Human Services report.
Good evening. Health and Human Services took up the GEMS proposed contract renewal last Tuesday. We were joined by Robert Corangelo, Chairman of the Board of Health, Caroline Basely, Director of the Board of Health, Tracy Scheidinger, GEMS Executive Director, Michael Nykamp, GEMS CFO, and Jenny Baldock, the GEMS Board Chair. The Department of Health, as you heard, is the town agency charged with oversight of this contract, which is why Mr. Corangelo and Ms. Basely presented to our committee. The most substantial change proposed in this new contract is extending the contract from five years to 10 years. The Board of Health unanimously approved this extension to 10 years at their February 25, 2019, board meeting, as they believe it is in the best interest of the town to extend to a 10-year term. GEMS comes before the Board of Health on a quarterly basis and provides operational and financial updates, and the board feels very comfortable with extending the terms of the contract to 10 years. The following reasons were provided for why this extension would be beneficial. One, it enhances the ability to do fundraising for capital projects. As you know, GEMS provides all of their own and purchases all of their own equipment, which is ambulances. If donors know that the organization has a 10-year contract, they are more apt to donate. Two, leases. GEMS currently leases some of their buildings, most notably their administrative headquarters on East Putnam. If they have a long contract, they can explore longer-term leases, which in theory should provide for some cost savings. Three, workforce stability. The EMS field is quite competitive. Employees are more apt to stay with their current job if they know they have a long-term contract. And four, each contract renewal process uses the time and energy of various personnel, the Law Department, the GEMS executive staff, the Board of Health members, and the Board of Health administrative staff, and they begin the process about 18 to 12 months before the contract expires. So, if you're on a five-year term, you're really doing that about every three and a half years or so. So, fewer contract renewals allows those individuals to focus on other matters. It should be noted that GEMS has provided ambulance and EMT service for over 30 years, and the town is happy with their level of care and partnership. In the event of poor performance, the contract does include a provision to terminate, and the example that was given is if they were to increase their costs. So, now they come in with a budget of $100 million. You can't suddenly submit this wildly extravagant and inconsistent budget with previous years and expect the town to pay that cost. So, there are provisions that would allow us to get out of that contract. It was also pointed out to the committee that GEMS works exclusively in Greenwich, that they don't provide services to other towns, so there's no shared or partnering with other communities, and every ambulance has a paramedic onboard. Ms. Basely did mention that on page 30 of the contract, a cyber liability insurance requirement has been added. Our committee did not discuss that requirement in great detail, but I believe you are going to hear more about that cybersecurity issue from Legislative and Rules this evening. Our vote was 11-0-0 with District 10 absent. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael Basham, Vice Chair of our Finance Committee.
Ms. Basely and her group also presented to the Finance Committee that night, and we listened to the same discussion concerning the length of the contract extension. One of the things that did come up in our committee meeting is it was noted that as a 501(c)(3), the town provides a very substantial portion of their budget, much larger than some of the other 501(c)(3)'s here in town. Concern was raised, are we truly indemnified? Are we at risk from GEMS, given the significant portion of their budget, approximately 62% that we provide? As it turns out, the Legal Department and the Risk Management people have determined that, given the current structure, we're not at risk, and in fact, they require that GEMS maintain a substantial amount of liability insurance that will protect the town in case of the indemnification agreement we have between them as ever exercised. As a result, the committee voted 11-0-0 to support the contract as it was presented to us that night, and District 4 was absent.
Thank you. Doug Wells with the Legislative and Rules Committee report.
We took this item up last Monday evening. We had Jean McLaughlin, Assistant Town Attorney, go through the contract with us. We spent most of our time on the language of the contract. He pointed out that there were two scrivener's errors in the contract, and so we, at his suggestion, deleted those two mistakes in the body of the contract. At the appropriate time, I'll make that motion. The only thing that I would add is that we also discussed with the people who appeared in our committee, Carolyn Basely, Jennifer Baldock, as well as the treasurer of GEMS, whose name I didn't get. The actual amount of money that will be funding GEMS this coming fiscal year is $4.7 million out of an operating budget of $7.371 million. This year, GEMS raised $600,000, which is more than they usually raise. They usually are somewhere between $500 and $550 that they raise towards purchase of new equipment for the various facilities that they operate. Our vote as amended was 9-0-0 with Districts 5, 9, and 10 absent. The member from District 9 indicated that she would have voted in favor of this had she been able to stay, but she had to leave halfway through the meeting. Subsequent to our meeting, and actually earlier today, I got a call from the Law Department. I spoke with Wayne Fox and Jean McLaughlin, who told me... I spoke with Wayne Fox and Jean McLaughlin, who told me that a member of the BET, in order to provide more teeth to the cybersecurity provisions in the agreement, in addition to the $1 million insurance coverage we have, would like to include language requiring that there be specific obligation on the part of GEMS to notify in the event of a cybersecurity breach. That language is now appearing on the screen. If it can be read, I won't bother to read it, but it is the second full paragraph of Paragraph 19. Can you all read it?
No.
Okay. So, at the appropriate time, I'll read that language. And it is an amendment, by the way, that has been approved by the BET, the Law Department, and GEMS as language that can and should be included.
No, what did the BET put?
Oh, I'm sorry. It was a member of the BET who put it forth.
I think it was drafted by the Law Department. It was drafted by the Law Department.
Then I stand corrected. I was under the impression that this language came from the Law Department, but it was at the behest of a member of the BET.
I think that's accurate.
Yeah. Okay. All right. So, in any event, our vote on this, as amended, was 9-0-0. And the language that the Law Department --
Now, the language, the proposed amendment, has been sent to at least one person in every district. Is that correct?
It was circulated to the Legislative and Rules members, who in turn were asked that they forward it to the district. So, I don't know how many people actually got to see it. I know it was late.
Right. It happened today.
Yes.
But I just wanted to alert people, if you have the ability to check your email, you might have that language if you are having difficulty reading it. Does anyone, by the way, need the Wi-Fi password?
No.
All right. So, it's now Greenwich Schools, not Guest, but Greenwich. I'm talking about which Wi-Fi you would click on. Greenwich Schools. And the password is, this is all lowercase, it looks like, GPSWiFi1. The number one. GPSWiFi number one. No spacing. All right.
All right. So, first, I will point out the changes to the contract that were taken up by our committee last Monday, and they are located on page 6 of the contract. There is an underlining under where it says Current Station 4. Three lines below that, there's language that is -- shouldn't have been included in the contract. It says State Certification Level for EMT dash Change to AEMT. That language should be deleted. And then, on page 7, the second full paragraph, there is a paragraph that begins with 2.05-02 open paren, 15 close paren. Those numbers should be deleted as well.
All right. So you're making a motion to amend?
Yes.
Those? All right. Is everyone -- so that's offered on behalf of our Legislative and Rules Committee. Doesn't require a second. Does anyone need that repeated? We can adopt motions to amend by unanimous consent. Is there any objection to making those changes? All right. Absent objection. That motion to amend is adopted upon unanimous consent. Thank you.
All right. Now, as to the language that some of us --
Well, I think we have one more committee report.
Oh.
So, is that right?
Sure.
So why don't we get that first? Richard Newman, Chair of our Town Services Committee.
Though this motion was not referred to Town Services, we did have a motion before us from District 9 to take up the item. A voice vote was taken, and we agreed to do it. Committee engaged in a discussion about the governing agreement as described in the call, specifically the change of duration described in Section 21, basically going from five years to 10 years. We made a motion. A motion was made to modify the term as outlined in Section 21 and revert to the original five-year term. The motion was seconded by District 9, and discussion continued. Weighing the benefits and exposure to the town, all members indicated satisfaction with the service provided by GEMS, with the discussion focusing on the departure from what we called the historical five-year term. The committee voted on the motion. The vote was 3 for, the motion 4 against, with 1 abstaining. Districts 2, 3, 4, and 5 are absent. Districts 7, 8, and 9 voted to approve the motion. Districts 1, 6, 10, and 11 opposed the motion, and District 12 abstained. The motion failed. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Wells.
So for those of you that can't read what's on the screen, the language that is proposed to be inserted in Paragraph 19 of the contract is as follows. Provider shall maintain data security procedures designed to safeguard patient information. Provider shall immediately report to the director any unauthorized use or disclosure of patient information arising from a breach of such procedures, including the extent of the unauthorized release or use, the recipients of the data, and the data released or used. Provider shall mitigate, to the extent practicable, any harmful effect that is known to the provider arising from any unauthorized use or disclosure of patient information, and shall report to the director the steps taken to mitigate the harm.
All right. Thank you. That is a motion to amend Item 3 by amending this provision of the contract with GEMS. That is currently before us. Discussion on the motion to amend.
Mr. Moderators, questions? The first paragraph, the first paragraph is not included. Were moving that?
No, that is included. The provider agrees to comply in every respect with statutes. Further discussion on the motion to amend. Alan Small, District 10.
It would seem to me that -- hello, Alan Small, District 10. The first paragraph is really all that should be needed. And you in the medical field understand HIPAA. HIPAA is a federal law that regulates disclosure of patient information that covers every single thing that was just said by Mr. Wells. So, I think it's redundant. If you want to vote for it, you can. It's just redundant. And thank you very much.
Brian Rainey, District 9.
Yeah, I urge us to vote against this. I don't like the timing of this, Mr. Moderator. The fact that we just got this today. I mean, literally, just while this was being discussed. I feel that's inappropriate. We've had three weeks plus to bring this up and bring it before committee. I urge you to vote against this amendment.
Further discussion on the motion to amend. Nothing, Mr. McLaughlin? All right. If you are in favor of this amendment, I'm going to ask the district chairs to take a record vote. Will the district chairs please mark your voting cards? Legislative and Rules Committee -- I'm sorry. No, this is a Doug Wells -- I'm sorry. So, is there a second to the Doug Wells motion to amend?
Second.
All right. So this motion to amend has been moved by Mr. Wells and seconded. Will the district chairs please mark your voting cards? Wells' motion to amend Item 3. And proceed to poll your delegation. Again, we will need to know the result of this before proceeding further. So I ask the district chairs to expedite the vote. All right. We have the result of the vote on the motion to amend. Those in favor, 147. Opposed, 20. Abstaining, 7. So that motion has carried. Will -- any further discussion on Item 3 as amended? Will the district chairs please mark your voting cards? Item 3 as amended. And proceed to poll your delegation. While we are voting, we can continue. Item -- all right. So, of the remaining items, only one is not to be postponed. So, Item 5. May we have the resolution on that item? Oh, this is an Appointments Committee nomination. I'm sorry. John Eddy, Chair of our Appointments Committee.
Resolve that the following named person nominated by the Appointments Committee be appointed a regular member R1 of the Condemnation Commission for a term expiring 3/31/2023. Sardar Umar.
All right. Thank you. That being offered on behalf of our Appointments Committee does not require a second and is currently before us. Mr. Eddy?
Mr. Moderator, I understand that this item is going to be postponed by another committee.
Okay. Mr. Berg?
Good evening, Mr. Moderator. Mr. Umar was not able to attend the Land Use Committee meeting. He was away on business. So we postponed this item to the September meeting.
Well, you're moving "we postpone" the item.
We moved to -- we adopted a motion to postpone this item to the September meeting.
All right. So, Land Use is moving to postpone Item 5 to our September meeting. That is currently before us. I will call for a voice vote on this. All those in favor of postponing Item 5 to our September meeting, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion is carried. Item 11 now comes before us. Peter Tessie, our First Selectman.
Good evening, Mr. Moderator, ladies and gentlemen of the RTM. Item 11, resolve that the following named person nominated by the Board of Selectmen be appointed a regular member of the Board of Nathaniel Witherell R4 for a term beginning July 1, 2019, and expiring June 30, 2022. It's the same as appears on the call. Lawrence Simon.
Thank you. A member please move the adoption of the resolution. Resolution on Item 11 has been moved and seconded. Alexis Vulgaris with the report of our Health and Human Services Committee.
Good evening. Health and Human Services met with Mr. Simon last Tuesday evening. Mr. Simon is the current Chair of the Witherell Board, a position he has held since 2016. Prior to joining the Board of Witherell, he served on the BET for 12 years, 10 years on their Budget Committee, and five years on the Town's Retirement Board. He retired in 1997 after working for many years at a company that he co-founded, Health Management Systems. This is the eighth time that Mr. Simon has met with the committee this year to discuss matters -- I'm sorry, met with the committee this RTM term to discuss matters related to Nathaniel Witherell. So as a committee, we feel very comfortable with Mr. Simon, and we feel that we know him quite well, and the skills that he brings to the Board. So we opted to use our time with Mr. Simon to have him explain how the Board and the facility are responding to some of the recommendations made by Health Dimensions Group and PKF O'Connor-Davis, which is the group conducting the financial study. So some of the things that Mr. Simon shared with us regarding Witherell's plans to implement some of the recommendations are, one, they are looking to offer medical rehabilitation in addition to orthopedic rehabilitation. For example, those clients suffering from COPD, pneumonia, or requiring IV therapy, they could be treated in a subacute setting, possibly by dedicating, you know, six or seven rooms of the orthopedic beds in the medical rehabilitation unit on the first floor to treat their illness. The rehab landscape has changed dramatically. Procedures such as knee replacements, which previously required up to three weeks of rehab, are now being done on an outpatient basis for uncomplicated cases, and very little inpatient rehab is needed. Implementing a subacute care unit can probably be done with the same amount of staff, but they will need more training to properly care for those more complex patients. Another thing that he's working on with the Board is identifying new admission sources. Greenwich Hospital has long been the primary referral source for Witherell, but the Board is working with Stanford Hospital and the Hospital for Special Surgery to become a preferred referral source. And the more referrals, the more referral sources you have, the better chance of keeping the census high. The daily census for Witherell is about 92%, which is higher than the average daily census for other local nursing homes, about 82%. So to help contextualize that, it's a 202-bed facility, and they run at about 186 beds occupied ideally each day. Another enhancement is they're looking to streamline financial areas such as --
Mr. Detchin, for what purpose do you rise?
What I suggest, I would like to suggest that this per report, as interesting as it is, is not relevant to the item before us, which is the reappointment of the --
All right. Ms. Vulgaris, I think the --
Okay. So ultimately, what we decided is we voted him with a vote of 11-0-0. We felt that he was doing a great job of providing, you know, capable leadership to Witherell, and he was responsive to the outside recommendations. Thank you.
Thank you. John Eddy with the Appointments Committee report.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, members. Alexis did an excellent job of reporting many of the things that we discussed with Mr. Simon. Our discussion was frank and friendly, and our vote was 12-0-0.
Thank you. Discussion on Item 11. Will the district chairs please mark your voting cards? Item number 11. And proceed to poll your delegation. Item number 12 now comes before us. May we have that resolution? Peter Tessie, our First Selectman.
Item 12, resolve that the following named person nominated by the Board of Selectmen be appointed a regular member of the Board of Nathaniel Witherell R3 for a term expiring July 1, 2019, and expiring June 30, 2020.
Thank you. A member please move the adoption of the resolution. Resolution on Item 12 has been moved and seconded. Mr. Eddy with the Appointments Committee report.
Mr. Moderator, members, the Appointments Committee voted to postpone this item until September.
All right. So, the Appointments Committee is moving to postpone Item 12 to our September meeting. All those in favor of postponing Item 12 to September, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. Item 17 now comes before us. May we have the resolution on that item? Peter Tessie with Item 17.
Resolve that the following named person nominated by the Board of Selectmen be appointed a regular member of the Alarm Appeal Board for a term beginning July 1, 2019, and expiring June 30, 2023. Thomas Zach.
Thank you. A member please move the adoption of the resolution. Resolution on Item 17 has been moved and seconded. Mr. Eddy?
Mr. Moderator, the Appointments Committee voted to postpone this item until the September meeting.
All right. Our Appointments Committee is moving to postpone Item 17 to September. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion has carried. Item 18 now comes before us. Mr. Tessie?
Resolve that the following named person nominated by the Board of Selectmen be appointed a regular member of the Board of Health for a term beginning July 1, 2019, and expiring June 30, 2023. Andrew Bronen.
Thank you. A member please move the adoption of the resolution. Resolution on Item 18 has been moved and seconded. Who is -- which committee is moving on this? Mr. Eddy? Number 18?
Yep. I think, Mr. Moderator, I believe he was on the consent calendar. Was he not, Bronen?
We're moving to September.
No. Item 18.
Yep. Health and Human Services is moving to postpone Dr. Bronen to September. Our vote was 11-0-0 on that.
All right. Thank you. So there is pending before us a motion to postpone Item 18 to September. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion has carried. And the final item on our agenda tonight, Item 19. Mr. Tessie?
Resolve that the following named person nominated by the Board of Selectmen be appointed a regular member of the Board of Nathaniel Witherell for a term beginning July 1, 2019, and expiring June 30, 2022. Richard Kaplan.
Thank you. A member please move the adoption of the resolution. Resolution on Item 19 has been moved and seconded. Mr. Eddy with the Appointments Committee report.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Mr. Moderator, the Appointments Committee voted 12-0-0 in favor of the appointment of Mr. Kaplan, but I am suggesting that, for administrative reason, that we postpone this until September. May I state that reason before we move on with the other reports?
Yeah.
Yep. The -- in most cases, when a person is reappointed to a board or an agency, they retain their designation. So, their designation is R1, they retain that designation when they're reappointed. In this particular case, we -- on the board of Nathaniel Witherell, there, Ms. Puschel wished only to serve one more year, but her term would be for three more years. Mr. Kaplan had a one-year interim term for one year, but he was still willing to serve for -- serve for three years. So, those two designations were switched, which was a great idea because it saves the nominee a lot of time, and it saves the Board of Selectmen and the RTM time as well. So, it was a, I think it was a brilliant move to do that. However, what we did not anticipate is that Mr., that one of them would be postponed until September, and the other one would be approved. If, if in this case, we approve the appointment of Mr. Kaplan after having postponed Ms. Puschel, then we end up having two people with the same designation serving for a period of three or four months. So, the, the easy way of solving this problem is to just postpone one until September under the Town Charter. They both continue to serve without any interruption to the services to the Town.
All right. So, you're moving to postpone this to September?
Yes.
Thank you. All those in favor postponing item 19 to our September meeting, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion is carried. All right. The sole remaining item of business is to announce the vote on the GEMS contract. That is item number three. Those in favor, 167; opposed, 0; abstaining, 6. That item is carried. There being no further business to come--
Item 11.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, whoa, 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 whoa. Excuse me. We do have the vote on item 11 pending.
No. Did you, did you turn it on?
All right. We have the result of the vote on item 11, the appointment of Larry Simon to the Board of Nathaniel Witherell. Those in favor, 159; opposed, 9; abstaining, 6. That item is carried. There being no further business now to come before the meeting, this meeting stands adjourned upon unanimous consent. Thank you all for coming. Have a safe trip home. Have a wonderful summer. See you in September.